October 2015 Plum Borough Board of School Directors Meeting. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vento, roll call, please.
Mr. Colella?
Here.
Mr. Dowdell?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. McGuff?
Here.
Mr. St. Ledger is absent. Mrs. Stepnick?
Here.
Mrs. White?
Here.
And Mr. Zuko.
Here by phone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vento. The board met in executive session October 20th and this evening, October 27th, to discuss matters of personnel, student confidentiality, real estate, and a potential claim against a vendor. Approval of minutes?
Recommend approval of the following meeting minutes: September 29, regular board meeting; October 6, Education Committee meeting; and Safe and Supportive Schools meeting; October 13, Facilities and Policy Committee meetings; and October 20, Policy and Finance Committee meetings.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. We have no student features tonight, and before we get to the comments section, I'd like to read a statement for our citizens. "We are pleased to be voting tonight on a new policy on the subject of maintaining professional adult-student boundaries. This policy is an eight-page document that outlines what may seem obvious to most. However, we cannot take that for granted, that anyone will practice or adhere to obvious regulations when it comes to the interaction between adults and students. This policy, still in draft form, is currently available on the district's website. During the past several weeks, our board has reviewed and amended this policy, which is modeled after a policy that was recently drafted by the Pennsylvania School Board Association. This board and our solicitor vetted the policy. During the next few weeks, we plan to solicit feedback on this policy from staff, parents, and the Safe and Supportive Schools Advisory Council, our citizens. Based on feedback that we received, administrative regulations, ARs, will be developed to provide any further necessary clarification or direction. Over the next month, we will prepare training modules to in-service all of our full-time and part-time employees, coaches, volunteers, parent groups, and contractors who interact with our student. Our deadline for full policy implementation is December 22, 2015. This is an important and purposeful step we are taking in order to safeguard our children and create an indisputable standard of conduct in our school community." Thank you. That said, we can go to citizens' comments on agenda items this evening. On agenda items. Citizens' comments on know-it-on non-agenda items. No comments. Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. The agenda, please.
Facilities Committee, Mr. Rich Zuko, Chair. Approve the use of facilities requests as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a discussion. Item number one, it seems okay, but I'm having problems with item number four and item number nine because of the length of time that those are having, and I think we were going to go into policy and decide whether or not there was going to be a fee associated with that usage. Have we established a fee for that usage?
You know, Mr. Zuko, in our policy 707, there is a fee scheduled, and it's based on the type of community organization they are. Now, I think there was some difficulty with whether or not we should charge, since we're charging St. John's, whether or not we should charge the Y. But according to our definition, the Y is considered a youth group, and the youth group has to have 90 percent of its students attending.
And we give everybody ample opportunity to come in and do a Q and A with us, and in addition, you know, time to plan and to budget. I don't think this is fair to do to an organization of any sort at the last minute. I mean, this took, some of these took two months, three months to get to our computers, and that's unheard of to me, and I don't understand why, and I don't think it's fair to them that we have to say you can only have it for a month. At this point, the season's ready. I think we need to deal with this in the spring and have a full, real discussion about 707.
Also, you know, we spent a lot of time coming up with these definitions for 707. I mean, there was a lot of time put into this policy, and from the discussions that I remember us having, I really don't see what else you can do or what other criteria you can use. It seems fair to me. But as I've said, you know, if maybe, Rich, you want to come up with some other kind of a fee schedule and come prepared to discuss it at a policy committee meeting, I think the board probably would entertain and listen to, you know, your suggestions. I just don't know what other suggestions you would have or what else you could do. As I said, we spent a lot of time on this policy.
The one part of context, I think, in this particular situation with the Y, is essentially they are conducting our program. Okay, and that's the difference. This isn't an out-of-house group that, you know, has a for-profit program that they're doing. We, several years ago, essentially had them do this program for our kids, for our students. So that's why I feel that it fits into the category of being just exactly like an in-house program that you wouldn't charge for. Because when we had the discussions at that time, there was a time when we ran, when the district ran, the basketball program, and our people would run that program. But that was passed off and passed on to the Y to run this program, so the program continued without a seam because it's, because the Y took over the program, took over the administration of the program, and they have the referees, they have the, organize the coaches, they have the, set up the schedules and things like that. So they're really doing our program.
And actually, they're more than nonprofit, because I know for the basketball program, they have referees, because my granddaughter was one, and they paid her for refereeing. So that came out of the Y's budget, not ours.
Right.
So, you know, in a sense, they're really doing us a favor.
But in the infancy of this program, I couldn't begin to tell you how many years, but when this first began, and I'm guessing that you're probably going back 20 years, when this youth basketball program began, because I remember my older son would have been in third grade, till Scotty's group came through, the program was already down to kindergarten. And it was a great benefit, because you could see Scotty was, would have been in the group that, he would have started the basketball program in kindergarten, and his group was so much more developed and so much more competitive when they got to the junior high and then ultimately to the high school. I think their seventh or eighth grade year, I think they were undefeated, they were the first team ever that had been undefeated, and it was because we were competitive with other school districts because we had this feeder program. But then at some point, it just became too cumbersome to administer ourselves, and that's why the Y then took it over. And I don't remember the details of that, but at some point, there was a transition. So they're effectively running our program, essentially running our program. So that's why this, I feel, would be an exception to the rule, because it is principally our students that are in this program. They're administering our program.
Well, I like the stipulation that they have, that the program has to have 90 percent of its students be our Plum students.
I think this is 100 percent.
And they do.
I think this would be 100 percent. This is our students' program.
No, I couldn't hear hardly anything, except I could hear Tom.
Well, this is a program we've never had complaints about. You know, that being said, I think it would be sort of unfair, unrealistic to just approve it for one month. Clearly, one month is not going to give us time to change the policy as in-depth as that. We have bigger things on our plates that we have to be concerned about. And, you know, if we want to do something in the spring, that's fine, but clearly, right now, I think it would be unfair to the YMCA to say we're just going to do it for a month. So...
It wasn't even just the Y. I mean, there was a couple of those, Sal, that we got that were, I mean, stamped in July, and we got them in October. Well, I mean, we can't have a real conversation about something like that. Yeah, there was one. So...
Yeah, I don't think we should change the policy in mid-season.
All right, I'll go along with that. I'll just say that I would like to entertain this in the spring, because the high demand for our facilities is getting way out of hand, and I think we're going to have to make clearer policies and establish something where we don't have to rule by exception all the time. So I'll be going with entertain this later on in the next year.
I really don't think, Richard, this is an exception. I think the Y fits into our definition of a youth group. So, you know, I wouldn't label it as an exception, but I think it's a good idea. I'm trying to talk louder here so he can hear me. I think it's a good idea that we wait until spring.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I don't really see the big differentiator between the Y and St. John's School. It does say church, but this is really a school. It's not a church, and these kids end up, most of them come to our school, and I know a lot of them that went to St. John's were some of the top players on our basketball teams. So I don't see the big differentiator between the Y and St. John's School, but, you know...
Well, you know what? Maybe keep that in mind, and in the spring, take that church, you know, that statement where it says churches, and have them put into the other category.
Well, there are some church leagues, you know, members of the church in general, but this is actually the school that's not the church, per se. So...
I don't think you have to wait till the spring. I mean, you could move St. John the Baptist School and specifically take St. John the Baptist School Athletics and move that to a different category.
And then just continue charging them.
You could do that.
Oh, that sounds good.
Yeah, I would entertain. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
You could probably do that right now.
That's part of my argument of...
You could probably waive the fee.
Well, that's part of my argument. Like, we charge the church, but we don't charge the Y.
For the St. John the Baptist.
Yeah, I would go for that.
I mean, rather than charging the Y, you know, going in that direction, it's a good idea. Go in the other direction.
I think that's the better way to do it, because I agree with Kevin that...
May I make that as a proposal for us tonight? If we had sufficient time to discuss it, that we could actually vote on this tonight, I'd be happy to make that proposal.
I'd be comfortable with waiving St. John's fee.
Because they are children in our community.
Yeah, I think we should. I agree.
And then I think that you may want to put this on 707 for next month and maybe make that one change, and then approve that again next month, because St. John's does use our other facilities in addition to just basketball. They're up here for track, cross-country, and some other activities, and they're great partners of ours.
Yes, they are.
I would rather move in that direction than charge the Y additionally.
May I make that, may I make that policy?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
May I make that recommendation, that we do that, because there's a St. John's request as part of this?
We have a motion and a second, so we need to vote on the motion in a second.
Yeah, I think he's going to clear that up.
What you could do is make a motion to amend to waive the fee for the St. John the Baptist Elementary School program.
I will do that and include that as part of this.
That would require a second, and that will then become the main motion.
Okay, is anybody going to second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Do we need a public call, not leave?
No.
Okay.
But you do have to vote separately on the amendment first.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on amending that St. John the Baptist not be charged any fees. Any, no discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Now, that amended motion becomes your main motion, and that's what you're voting on now.
Okay. We're back to the main motion. Any other discussion on the main motion?
Well, the only thing I have to say, then, is we can still entertain discussing it at the next policy committee meeting.
Sure.
Okay, fine.
Sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Sorry, just making some notes. Item two, recommend approval to accept the following use of facilities requests as listed.
Item number three, I would like to make that recommendation on behalf of the board.
We've got to do two.
That's two.
We're on the number two.
We're going to do number two.
Oh, I think you favored that as part of the St. John's.
Well, we did, no.
Yeah.
So your motion would be to also include waives.
Yeah, so the motion's going to include, motion two is going to include waiving the fee for 707 as indicated.
So the amendment carries on to item number two.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, yes.
Need a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval for a three-year renewal with control service agreement with combustion service and equipment company in the amount of $26,040 annually.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of GOB invoices as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation also.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to submit Plan Con Part E Design Development for New Regency Park Elementary School Project to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, PDE Project Number 3830, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Vento, roll call.
I'm sorry, I actually did want to say something. I'm spacing out. Is that okay?
That's okay.
I apologize. I did want to, I did a little bit of my own homework on Regency, and I, instead of the rumors that there's empty classrooms in our other elementary schools and others, I went directly to the source and asked Dr. Rossi, and I said, "How many rooms are open in each of our elementary schools?" And he emailed me back last week and said, "Holiday Park has zero rooms available. Only potentially full class size available is Band Strings Room," which we have a position there, so that would not be. Center has zero rooms available, special rooms available on off days. Pivot has zero rooms available. Old Holiday Park/Regency Park has six rooms available, because of course, that school was larger when we consolidated, and that is their temporary home. Special Education and Gate do share a room on Days One and Three in the afternoon at Holiday Park. Gate was given additional rooms for which they can use for students if they need to. So I, you know, that reinforces to me the need for space and for the school and for future growth, not in five years, but 10, 15 years from now. That, to me, reinforced the need, because there aren't empty classrooms, as some are going around saying. And again, I went right to Dr. Rossi, and I asked him specifically, because I knew he would have that full count.
I think one of the issues, it's not empty classrooms, it's class size. And what the board should have done is look at the class sizes based on enrollment at Regency Park and combining that school with Center School. I did that for one year and submitted that as the Act 34 document, and it's telling. So I would urge the citizens to go to the Act 34 site and pull up that document. Clearly, it's not the number of empty rooms, it's the number of students we have in those rooms. So that was my comment. Any other comments?
Yeah, well, I think at Pivot, it said there was 750 capacity, and if you divide that up, that means that there are 28 kids in a classroom. And I think that's kind of high, especially when you're talking about kindergarten and elementary students being in classes that have 27 students in them. So if you're going to talk about class size, and when we went to the Act 34 for Pivot, I think parents were there and they were, you know, speaking out against the fact that the capacity was at 750, and they were worried about class size. And we assured them that even though we say there's 750 capacity, that that probably would never come about. But I guess you're saying now that it should come about.
That's not what I'm saying.
Lee, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
And I tried to find the answer, but it gave me several roundabout answers as I was trying to just get one answer to a question, and I was trying to look things up online. How many students can be in an elementary classroom before we're required to have an aide in that classroom?
There is no requirement.
Isn't that based off of special ed numbers, though? If you have a number of IEPs in a classroom?
It has to do with teacher load, but not whether or not you have a paraprofessional.
So that special ed students would have no bearing on that? If we had 28 or 30 in a class, which is, if we don't ever go through with this Regency, then that's what's going to happen. What happens with those special ed needs?
Well, remember, well, some special ed kids have an aide with, a paraprofessional with them all day, so that factors in.
Right.
And then, yes, I would say most places, if you're, if it's a pullout of a special ed class, of which you don't have too many anymore, I don't think you'd reach a number that high. Most of your pullouts are much smaller one-on-ones.
Okay.
But you do need a space for them, obviously.
Correct.
Yeah, we used to have a class size policy where we specified that you needed to have an aide or that, after so many people, so many students in each class. But we did away with that policy.
I would love to revisit.
But then there were guidelines specifically set, good faith guidelines within the school district, that they would say that if there were rooms, you know, available, or, you know, they would make the class sizes comparable. We don't have the classrooms available.
Right.
Yeah, the point is, it's locally, it's a local determination.
Okay. But you're absolutely right, Loretta. There was a policy, and it was right around the 25, 26 mark, and that they, the district would do an aide after that in the classroom, in particular, in the K to 2. And then, I believe, you know, the fourth grade, like, the upper grades of the policy was more close to the 27, right? And then they would add an aide in that classroom.
I think it's something we should revisit.
I would love to revisit that.
You know, and when you look at class size, I mean, Loretta and I, we've talked about class size since I've been on the board, and you look at the literature out there, whether it be the Star Tennessee Report, which is from 1989, or to Wisconsin or California, I think we have to look at things that improve the quality of education. And if we can do that, then I think that we should look at it. I think that's fair to say to the community.
With a policy on classroom size? Is that what you're saying, to revisit?
Well, not classroom size, the use of an aide in the classroom.
I would love to talk about classroom size.
It wasn't a policy, but...
I think that can go hand in hand.
In 2009, we had a lot of discussion, and I actually initiated a class size, and it fell short of becoming a policy, an actual policy, but it was just something that I think the administration worked from, and this goes back to 2009. And your numbers were pretty correct.
I remember it.
And it was K through three was one, and I believe that was 24. If it went to a 25th, if there was a room available, it would be split. If a room wasn't available, it would be an aide. And then I believe the number was 28 in the four through six. But most definitely, this was something that we had a lot of discussion about, because I think we can all agree that there is value in having the right ratio of teachers to students.
And unfortunately, this year, we do have some classrooms that are very high, but we knew that was going to happen with the redistricting this year, and the students in particular in that sixth grade year that would be grandfathered and given the opportunity to take out their sixth grade year in that class. So I, you know, we do have some very large classrooms this year. So next year, I would like to see where all those numbers, where everybody falls next year.
Yeah, you have to. We would have 296 sixth graders move on, so who knows what's going to happen to class size next year. We have the same number of kindergartens coming in at 232, and when 292 are leaving, I mean, there's something to be said. So, but clearly, I'd love to have a discussion about class size. I really would.
But you know what? I think our policy said that if we had 25 or 26, that meant that we had to hire another teacher, and that was what the problem was. Because if you have a class size of 26 and you have to hire another teacher, that means you have two 13, 13 kids in each class.
Yeah.
So that was the reason why we decided that we would allow the administration to use their common sense in determining class size.
Yeah, sure.
That's the way it went. That's why we abolished it, and that's what Mr. McGuff is talking about.
Hiring another teacher after 25.
For me? Well, like, 25, you have 25, and then we have 20. No, no, part of the policy was you had to hire another teacher, and that's what the problem was.
And there was a great presentation by several of the teachers that was done back in 2009. I was very, you know, as a parent, I was involved in that as well. And, you know, you had a team of your K to 2 teachers, your 4 to 6, you know, even up through your high school levels, and, you know, I would love to see that document. I know it exists. I'm sure you have it.
I know.
Well, I'll tell you, I think the point is that we need to look forward, because now that's already six years old, and so this is a moving target that we aim at, and I believe that we do need to revisit.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Tom, but do we need to look forward with declining enrollment in this district?
We still need to look at the policy. What our policy should be as a district, I believe we do need to look forward as to what our policy should be, and that is a factor that needs to be considered as we establish a policy. But like any policy from 2009, as we move into 15 and 16 and 17 and beyond, most definitely, we need to look, we know more about that than we would have six, seven years ago, and I believe that we need to, I agree with what you were saying, Sal, originally, about that we, this is something that we need to visit. We need to look at establishing and re-establishing guidelines for that.
We definitely need to look at improving the quality of education. That is a charge that the board has.
That's right.
That is our code of conduct.
Yes.
So clearly, we have to do that.
And I believe in keeping our classroom sizes down is paramount. It's most certainly.
Well, you know, at one time, the state gave extra subsidies for small classes. I think anything 17 and below, they gave you extra money for small classes, but they have since not subsidized that program, so we've adjusted our class sizes accordingly.
Okay, well, I believe there's a motion.
We have a motion. Yeah, we do. About Plan, we're going to do a roll call on Plan Con E.
Mr. Colella?
No.
Mr. Dowdell?
No.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. McGuff?
Yes.
Mr. St. Ledger is absent. Mrs. Stepnick?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Zuko?
Not over the phone.
That motion passes. The Facilities Committee met on October 13, 2015.
Mr. Zuko, will you make an answer?
Yes.
Not over the phone. We discussed everything pretty much at length, and I'm sure everything, we discussed it was well-publicized, so I forego that till the next meeting.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 10, following a special voting meeting in the high school boardroom. Personnel Committee, Mr. Kevin Dowdell, Chair. Recommend approval to accept the retirement of Peter Podrowski, custodian of Holiday Park, effective November 7, 2015.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the retirement of Paul Radnauer, bus driver, retroactive to October 16, 2015.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is that a retirement or resignation?
Sorry, resignation.
Okay. Do we need the motion read?
I don't think so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the resignation of Francis Ferragonio, substitute school security officer, retroactive to October one, two thousand fifteen.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Courtney Stein, substitute guidance counselor, beginning October twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen, through February two, two thousand sixteen, at a per diem rate of one hundred dollars.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Alyssa Pazman, substitute science teacher, effective October twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen, for a period not to exceed eighty-two days, at a per diem rate of one hundred dollars.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is this the science teacher for junior high?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to clarify. I actually had a parent bring that up to me again the other day, and I let them know that we were in the process of trying to fix that.
Can motion this, any, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Cheryl Sikora, swim aide at Plum High School, effective October twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen, at the contracted rate.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Alfred Hicks, Jr., bus driver, effective October twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen, at the contracted rate.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Robert Kane, substitute bus driver, effective October twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen, at the contracted rate.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to hire Tiara Watson, substitute bus aide, effective October twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen, at the contracted rate.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the following leaves in accordance with the Filling Medical Leave Act, as listed.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to amend the leave of Dana Iera to begin on October sixth, two thousand fifteen, through March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following leaves, as listed.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following unpaid leaves, as listed.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Education Committee, Mrs. Michelle Gallagher, Chair. Recommend approval to accept the porch booking agreement with Interstate Studios for school pictures for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the following grants, as listed.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the voluntary informal disposition for student A and student B.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
The Education Committee, met on October sixth, two thousand fifteen. Ms. Gallagher will make this report.
It wasn't a very long, I, we did have a lengthy PowerPoint presentation by Dr. Rossi's with our student achievement update. Is he going to put that on the website, do you know, Dr. Glasspool?
Uh, he can.
He can?
Yeah, I'll make sure, put up, make a note.
Uh, so that we could, you know, our community can see that as well. I mean, everything looked good. Again, you know, I know there's still conversation with the PSSAs and that we are in a, you know, we're in a change year, and I, you know, I've mentioned this for some months, so, you know, be patient, and I think we did great, but, you know, I think be patient as we move forward.
Michelle, if I could just add to that, there is just, already, just in a, in a couple few meetings, there is extraordinary value for the committee, because these are people, members of the community from all different walks and, and different levels of expertise in the very area that, that we're dealing with, and already, we've been able to integrate some of the suggestions that, that have come from the floor, come from that group, so we're just indebted to, to the folks who are participating in that, and very, very excited.
Well, you're getting ahead of me a little bit. I think you're talking about the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee.
Oh, I was.
I was just ending on the Education Committee.
You're doing our Education Committee.
And I know, I guess I could go, I guess I could go right into the Safe and Supportive Schools.
I'm sorry, it's my passion.
But I, I agree with you. I mean, I think we're, I mean, I-
Sorry about that.
Absolutely, continue, because we're number D, we're D.
Sorry.
But continue, Tom, absolutely.
It just, it's just incredible, the ideas that are coming from the floor, and, and we're just really all benefiting from the expertise of the, of that collective group. There's a true synergy, where the whole is greater than the sum of, some of its parts, and we're just very grateful for that. Thank you.
Right. I couldn't agree more with you. Can we just go into number, go into the-
Sure, go ahead.
All right. To echo what Tom was saying as well, the Safe and Supportive Schools met, and then we had our, our committee meeting with the school board on October sixth. And again, to echo what Tom said, that just to, you know, thank that all those citizens that come out and be part of that committee for volunteering their time, value fantastic ideas.
Yes.
You're, you're absolutely right with the credentials, and they're, you know, they're, it's a productive meeting, and the discussions about many different things with training and tip lines, moving forward. You know, there's been a lot of good things coming out of the committee, and I look forward to many more discussions. I know I mentioned, I'll mention it again, that we are doing through our, our SROs throughout our schools, we are doing the Project Safe Search, and I think that has, did any, did it happen this week? Maybe it's next week, that it's, I think, maybe our first-
Some of them this week.
Some of them were this week? Where our elementary students will be presented with age-appropriate internet safety and appropriate use of social media, and then we're going to revisit that with our junior high and our high schools. So definitely, and I think that there was a lot of discussion at the Safe and Supportive Schools with being able to go to our website. I know that we had one community member, Ms. Rossler, that had suggested that, can we get that all in one area? And can we, you know, it could be a way for, you know, the parents, when you navigate through our website, to have all of our information in one place. And I know that our Human Resources Director, Michael Brewer, he's been with a team and with our Technology Department, Chris Berkey, they've been working on that, and it is up and running, and it looks fantastic, and there's a lot of great information on there for our parent community, our students, our staff, you know, community members that, you know, anybody. And I, you know, welcome our community to look at the Safe and Supportive Schools tab on the website, and see that we have been working a lot behind the scenes and doing a lot of productive things for our website and for our student safety, so that's about it.
Thank you. You are meeting next Thursday, this Thursday, correct?
Yes.
Thursday.
With the steering committee.
The Advisory Council.
Pardon me?
The Advisory Council?
Yes, the, yes, the Advisory Council.
The PowerPoint that Dr. Rossi used at the Education Committee meeting is on the website. You click on District, Assessments, and it's under Downloads, and it's about forty-one slides, for those interested.
How many slides?
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, well-done slides.
It was, it was great.
It was very good. Michelle, I had a few parents and, at the, a couple of events this weekend also ask about the tip line, and their question was, we really need somebody else to do this, not the school district, and I explained to them, they may have missed the update from the past steering committee, that two different options that were outside of the school district were discussed.
Absolutely.
And I explained to them that you were trying to work with staff to get her, some more research to see what else was out there. I also have said that Kevin had made the suggestion of possibly looking to the IU to say, hey, do we want to maybe go into a service together, so then we have folks that are trained but are truly answering calls on a regular routine basis and are ready for whatever may come at them. And so I explained some of that, and I think that's just important to reiterate, because there are some folks, even on Facebook and in public, saying, well, what, when, how come you don't have somebody else doing this? And I tried to explain that the steering committee was researching those things and that you were heading that up.
Right, and it takes time.
Right, it does.
I mean, you know, it takes the collaboration between, you know, the Advisory Council, to the school board, to the administration, and sitting down and finding, you know, what that right fit is for our school district and that third-party tip line. So, I mean, it is in the works. We are, it's still a work in progress. And again, the, the common thread was definitely training, and I know that Dr. Glasspool and Mr. Brewer went today to some, you know, to an interesting meeting today, and I look forward to some of the education and training on some, some of the things that, you know, we can look forward to and possibly bring to our faculty, staff, students, parents. So look forward to that, hearing the update that Michael has as well.
When, when you click on that site, and I, and I reviewed that, what a comprehensive review of all the safety initiatives within the district. But there's one common thread, that there's, they're in silos. In this district, we have to have a discussion moving forward, is, we need a boundary spanner between those silos. Clearly, we need somebody to make sure these things are updated, looked after, and not only that, I mean, looking forward even to our personnel and all the stuff that we have to do with our personnel and clearances and things of that nature. It's becoming more and more complex, and keeping that in administration, with not having a specific boundary spanner that can do that, I think we're missing the boat. I, I think we really need to do that. I'm glad that Dr. Glasspool had taken the opportunity that I suggested it, looking at some of our local resources and meeting with our local resources to promote some of the things like Title IX. We still have to look at promoting students in our safety committees. We don't have that as yet. We need to do that. Students are a linchpin in moving everything forward, and clearly, as we look into training, we need some guest speakers here to not only educate this board, the public, and everybody. We need experts telling us about how it all fits together, and I think we're doing a great job in doing that right now, but there's nothing wrong with more education for all.
Sal, I just wanted to add, you were talking about student involvement. Mrs. Rossler had made the suggestion at, I believe, at one of our meetings, and I followed up on that and, and contacted administration at the high school, and I know that we're in the, in the process of doing that very thing, because that's a win-win situation.
It is.
Because with the students' involvement, they will also have a vested interest in that as well, so.
But the community has to know, we're not just sitting back.
Oh, absolutely.
We, we are moving forward.
But, yeah, I want to comment, some of these initiatives, we want to get them done quickly, but we also want them to be done right.
Correct.
So it may be, at the time, like, we, we approved the draft policy, so we get it on, you know, the website and, and in our, our policy manual, but also, we want to make sure we do it right. So it's going to take a little time, some of these initiatives, to, you know, go through it with the fine tooth come and make sure they're done properly, you know, because that's our ultimate goal.
Great point, Kevin.
And, and you're right, Kevin, and I think, you know, and I feel like some of the elephant in the room is, of course, we are, we are, there is an investigation out there, and I think we all sort of hoped that it would be concluded by the start of the school year, so we could have made whatever corrections and adjustments and changes, and that didn't happen, and, and so, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can, and we do want to do it correctly, and we, we do want the whole community to have input on this, and, you know, our students to have input and have training as well, and, and like I said, we'll do the best that we can and, and make it as correct as, as possible.
Okay. Thanks. Great discussion.
Finance Committee, Mrs. Michelle Stepnick, Chair. Recommend approval to accept the Treasury report and bill payments for the month of September two thousand fifteen.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Delinquent real estate taxes and fees received from Anderson Price for September two thousand fifteen, eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Recommend approval to accept the independent auditor's food service operations report for the year end, June thirty, two thousand fifteen, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? I think we need to send this back to the Finance Committee to do a better review of this. It showed a loss of sixteen thousand dollars with a net cash of roughly, I'm going to say ninety, I think it's eighty-nine thousand and change, eighty-nine thousand. But we need, we need to make sure on how the comparison was of the projected revenues and expenses. It's a sure thing to do. We can accept it, but I would like to have a little bit more detail and comparison in the past years.
Kevin, can you correct me? I'm sorry, sorry, I thought you were finished.
No.
The, because it's about the audit, and that was a question I had before we, we voted, but didn't, when did our, our new administrator start? In July, right? Wasn't there like a whole month crossover? So we also have a double pay-
So, we also have a double pay.
I heard in August, about two weeks.
It's two weeks, okay. I thought maybe there was a double payroll in there at some point as well that may have crossed into some of that.
I just want to make sure they don't run out of money.
No, and she didn't seem to think that they would, so.
You know. But I think we need to look at the top number, the net revenue, and make sure that they're going to be solvent. I mean, I remember five years back, that fund had four hundred thousand dollars. And if I remember correctly, there was a lot of money in that fund. And sadly, it dwindled down to ninety thousand dollars. And so, I think we just need to go back and look at the projected revenues expenses. I mean, we have the pro forma that was submitted last year. Only take us a few minutes to do that. Even if we approve this, I'm going to still recommend that we do that, just to make sure that we have some forward-looking things. I mean, we did lose money again. I think we consistently lose money. And next year, we very well may have to put money into that, and the budget's coming up pretty quickly.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yes, it is.
But we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the Small Games of Chance Resolution for the High School Football Boosters Club Incorporated, retroactive to October 26, 2015, as presented.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. I'm sorry.
There's this one thing as a reminder to our booster organizations. There's policy, it's 915, is that correct?
Correct.
Policy number? That there's things that you need to comply with, with the school district, to protect yourselves and your organization. So, for those that aren't aware of the policy, please check the district website for it. And if your booster organization is not in compliance, I ask that you turn the information in. That way, if we are asked for information or financials on your booster, we are able to present them. And with the parent leadership could change from year to year, it's also important to make sure we have a check some balances, so, just as a reminder. That's it, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second. And any other discussion? No other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
The Finance Committee met on October 20, 2015. Ms. Steppnick will make this report.
Yes, we went from a great discussion to a not-so-great discussion. I have some good news to report, though. Our IRS audit is completely done. We were given everything back from, on the disk to have on file here. There seems to be no issues or problems with it from our, the Holiday Park Bond, I'm sorry, the Pivot Bond. And we are a little bit behind on our budget, but we are going to get ourselves caught up, and we've made adjustments in our board schedule to do that. We should have a budget for the November 17 meeting, and we all have a budget workshop. I'd ask anybody in the committee, and the community that wants to come and join in the conversation, I'd ask you to come. It's December 1st. And we did also discuss, if there is not a state budget, what would we do? Would we borrow a lump sum, or would we borrow on a credit line? And I believe Jean is going to be looking into what the interest rates and what the costs are with that. I believe there's a seven hundred and fifty dollar a month fee, I guess, just for having that money. Is that correct?
Sure.
And so, and other districts around us are already borrowing, and our, you know, our funds have been holding. But we are going to reach a point by January, we're going to need to borrow money. And so, hopefully, we don't have to get to that. But there's a possibility that that could happen. So, we are preparing and trying to get the paperwork ready for that if we need to borrow. On the upside, it looks as if the state's trying to get a budget done before Thanksgiving. I guess we can hope that it does get done. It seems there's some movement on online gaming, slots at the airports, and a couple other things that would help draw in some new revenue into the state, and hopefully, some more revenue into public education. So, I'm hoping they're making their way. There are some things, I think, for the legislators that are a priority for them, events and whatnot, that are leading them to want to finish this by Thanksgiving, and let's hope that is the case.
I have a question.
Sure.
And I don't know if anybody knows this, but will we be reimbursed for the money that we have to pay interest, since it's not our fault that we don't have a budget? Why should we?
As of now, no.
The governor's trying for that, but that, I mean, the state just borrowed nine million dollars.
Doesn't seem fair. It's not our fault.
I've given Jean information from the AIU, because at the AIU, there was a really good deal with Bank of America. And interest rate and, right, and so, you're going to be pursuing that.
Yes, I talked with, but I spoke with Mr. Chris Brewer, who works for Dinsmore, which is the same company Cliff Pastel works for. And he indicated that they had about seven companies that they went to. Bank of America came out with the most favorable, but in the beginning, Bank of America wanted the AIU to switch all their accounts over to Bank of America. And that would have just been very, very cumbersome to do that for that short of a time of borrowing. But their interest rates were point-five, you know, it was very unique, and that's because it was a twenty million dollar borrowing. That's one of the reasons that, twenty-eight million dollar borrowing. It was very large, much more than any other district is going to experience. So, I spoke with Chris Brewer. I also spoke with Joe Miller from PNC Bank, which a lot of the districts use. And I also spoke with Jack Jacobs from S&amp;T. I prepared the cash flow analysis in their format that they wanted, basically from the information that I gave to the board that I had in Excel. So, things are moving. One of the things that will affect what happens here is our S&amp;P rating. Joe Muscatello and I had a telephone conversation, conference with S&amp;P yesterday, Standard and Poor, and, you know, went through the position of the district. Of course, the state impact, impasse is affecting everyone. So, there's a lot of little moving parts to this thing, but we'll have it together for you for next month.
Thank you.
I just think it's incredibly unfair that we should have to pay any interest, since it's not our fault. But then again, you know, bureaucracy is.
Loretta, they're still all getting paid. I'm quite sure of that. They borrowed nine million dollars, and we're paying interest, and they're probably all still getting paid, so.
Yeah. What's, the community has to know that we may have to have a preliminary budget done by January the 7th.
I was just going to say that, and we might not have.
January the 7th. And the state still does not have a budget. And so, you want to take a look at using your money wisely. We've run this district, and we still have some cash. So, we've done a good job. We really have.
Yeah, we may actually have to pass a preliminary budget before we truly get a budget for this current school year. And all we're really going to probably be able to look at is what we got last year to put in a number to figure out where our deficit is and how we're going to make that up, just so we could pass something just into the state. We, I mean, and the hope is we have a budget, but if that happens, and you have two holidays in the mix and all this other, I mean, who even knows if that, if we get one? But if we don't get a state budget, I believe that's the only thing we can do, is take the number we've received last school year and plug it in and go from there. That's what we're going to be stuck with.
Thank you. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 17th, following the Policy Committee meeting in the High School Boardroom. Policy Committee, Ms. Loretta White, Chair. Recommend approval to accept the following policy, policy 824, Maintaining Professional Adult Student Boundaries.
On behalf of the committee, I make that recommendation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I prepared a short report summarizing the highlights of the policy.
Thank you, Loretta.
This is the model policy we received from PSBA, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. This policy regulates communication on electronic devices between all district employees, independent contractors, student teachers, and volunteers with students. This policy limits communication to teaching, counseling, athletics, extracurricular activities, and student health issues on district-provided email or district-provided communication devices. I'm reading this because this gets a little technical. The policy contains a list of prohibited interactions, guidelines, and rules for reporting inappropriate or suspicious conduct, as well as disciplinary actions for those who violate the policy. There's also a training component, which requires the district to provide training to current and new district employees, volunteers, and students, teachers. Copies of the policy have already been distributed to some staff members for review, and the policy will be discussed at the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee. This policy, as well as all of our policies, is subject for review and changes if necessary. I kind of look at it as a work in progress, and I'm hoping that there will be changes made, and they will be agreed upon by input from community members, staff, board, and everybody all put together. For those of you who are interested, the policy is now on the school's website.
Mrs. White, if I may just add, I believe the title of the policy says it all. This is policy number 824, Maintaining Professional Adult Student Boundaries. Exclamation point.
Well, you know, I have confidence in it because it was done by the PSBA, and I'm sure it's been vetted, and their lawyers have looked it over. And I know that we need to kind of tweak it to make it fit for our particular situation, but I think the changes are probably going to be very small, and.
And I think that's important, that you say that, you know, there are most likely going to be, from the input from some of the other parties, I mean, we've given that this to be the full implementation, December 22nd. And to get the parties that, you know, that this affects, you know, we did state that this affects a lot of people. So, to go forward with this and say, okay, I mean, it's going to take time for all of us to adjust, to understand it, to be able to train, and that's important. That's extremely important, is to educate and train to our, everybody that this affects, this policy. So, you know, and I, you know, with the conversation that possibly on Thursday that we'll have about this, with the Safe and Supportive Schools Advisory Council, I think that we'll get some interesting feedback and be able to come with some possible new additions or ideas that maybe, you know, some of the changes to this as well. It is sad that we have to have some type of policy in this day and age, and, you know, and I've stated that, that technology is ahead of us. It's moving faster, you know, faster for our school district, faster for the parents. I'm sure that there's an app being made today that is going to be completely different than it was yesterday, and it's maybe secretive or something, you know, we just don't know. I mean, and it's hard to keep ahead of. So, I think that this is a start, and like Loretta said, it's definitely a work in progress.
Do we have a target date? Was it December?
December 22nd. Full implementation.
December 22nd. Full implementation, okay.
Tremendous pressure on the administrative staff to get their ARs and teaching and training and.
Well, I think if we waited for every question and every answer to be given and every, and we would be waiting forever to pass something. And I do believe this is a step in a positive and in the right direction. But also, I'm going to reiterate again and again and again until I see it happening. This can't just be for our student groups, this can't, I mean, for our parent groups and PTAs and boosters and volunteers. I want this to be open to the entire community. If there's a training or a question-and-answer session going on, I want this auditorium full of people, so they can come and ask questions and understand how it affects them. I mean, maybe some are babysitters, some may be relatives, neighbors, and some just may want to know what we're doing. And I want the community here, and I think it's, we're going to heal as a community. We're, I mean, I have to say, after going to the festival in the park this weekend, over three hundred students participated. This is a very strong community. And, you know, we have to heal and move on as a whole community, and this is one step in that direction. And without the entire community that wants to participate and give us input, I feel as if we're just going to sit here with this policy and only train a certain group of people. I want everybody to be able to come, and I'd like there, like I said last week and the week before, we need a week of training sessions available throughout the entire school district in the evening, so parents can come. They don't have to belong to a PTA, they don't have to belong to a booster. They can come, and they could listen. And we also need a time when students are going to be trained on this, and explain to them what this means. And so, they can ask questions if they feel they need to, whether it's out loud, or whether it's to stop by and have an open office hours time for their administrators in their buildings. They need to make sure, if they have questions, they can get those questions answered.
Well, I think we need input from all stakeholders.
Yes, absolutely.
And I'd like to hear input from the teachers, other staff members, from the board, and of course, the community members that we have coming to our Safe and Supportive Schools.
I had people that I didn't even know this weekend stop and say, thank you. Thank you for doing something and getting this ball rolling. I want to thank all of you for that. And so, by that being the case, we need to make sure we're giving it back. We have that, we have an open-door policy, a full transparency, comment, ask your questions, and hear what this means.
Well, you know, this is how we work all our policies. I mean, I know it's a joke, but how many times have we talked about 707? I mean, you know, we keep on changing that thing. So, I have full confidence in the fact that this policy will be changed, will be tweaked, and, you know, maybe five years from now, it'll still keep changing.
Right. Hopefully, change with the time and change with, like Michelle said, technology as it changes.
I agree with you, Michelle. You know, this board has been so transparent, practically invisible. You know, that's how transparent this board has been. And nobody on this board lies to anybody in the community. We're here to tell the truth. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Policy Committee on October 13th, and again on the 20th. Mrs. White, do you have anything else to report?
Yeah, you know, we met two times, and the, one of the things that we did was, we were going to merge the policies in the 300s, the 400s, and the 500s to eliminate some repetition. And we have a new policy website, which will be active by the end of the month to help complete this task. I think it's going to take some time, you know, to be talking about all these policies and figuring out where the repetition is. We also discussed 707, and I think we did some of that in facilities. The only other thing that we talked about is if there would be a conflict in the use of the elementary gyms. And I think we decided that it would probably be best if the involved parties would resolve the conflicts on their own, if they can. If not, then the administration is probably going to have to step in and resolve some of the conflicts. You can't have two entities trying to use the same gym at the same time. It's just not going to work. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. White. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the 17th, at 6:00 PM in the High School Boardroom. Athletic Committee, Mr. John St. Ledger, Chair. Recommend approval to hire the following coaches for the winter sports season as listed.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
Recommend approval to accept the following volunteer coaches as listed.
I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
The Athletic Committee did not meet this month. Food Service and Nutrition Committee, Mr. Kevin Dell Dell, Chair. The Food Service and Nutrition Committee did not meet this month. Transportation Committee, Mr. Tom McGuff, Chair. The Transportation Committee did not meet this month.
But I would like to have some comments. I had an exciting day last Wednesday. I had made the comments to some of the folks at our Tuesday meeting that I was going to be a part of the Operation Safe Stop. And this is an initiative that the district had taken to, all throughout the state of Pennsylvania, but our district had a wonderful program last Wednesday to increase the, garner public attention for school bus safety. And so, I had an opportunity. I was up and out to our new facility and working with the drivers. I got to ride on Bus 104 with, our driver was Timmy O. I was blessed to have all three runs with him. We went to the high school, the junior high, and then ultimately, the elementary run was to center. Afterwards, I had a tour of the facility, and as you would know, because I sent an email, I had a lengthy list of suggestions, comments, and things that we need to deal with, things that we need to take care of. And so, I sent that to you. I also sent a copy, just to kind of go full circle back to Scott, but some things that we want to take a look at. But the day was an extraordinary success, because there really was attention and visibility drawn to this important component. And so, I just say to all of the folks in our community that with the school buses, and they're different this year, some instances, than they were in the past, so traffic patterns are different, please, 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 drive the speeds that are the law in those particular zones. And thank you.
Thank you. Eastern Area Schools, Mrs. Loretta White, Representative. Mrs. White will make this report.
Yes, we had open house on October 22nd, and all went well. It was especially exciting because Dr. Nancy Sullivan, the AIU Director for Special Education, came, attended our meeting, and then toured the school. So, it was a very nice evening. Our next meeting is on November 19th at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative Policy Council, Mrs. Michelle Steppnick, Representative. Ms. Steppnick will make this report.
I have one more thing to add from the Finance. This is, we had talked about, and to reiterate and maybe follow up with Tom's, about the bus garage and things we need to continue following up with. I did get to have a conversation with Representative DeLuca. We did get maps to him, and our highlighted state routes that we are concerned with to make sure that they do know which way our buses are now coming from, from the New Greensburg Road location. And he said he'll follow back up to make sure he has that conversation, he doesn't see any issue. So, we are moving that along as quickly as we can before the snow starts to fall. And I'd like to take a point of personal privilege to thank the teachers once again in our district for giving as many hours and time as they did for that festival in the park. We are, and our family is honored to sponsor that parade. There were over three hundred students. It was just, it was a wonderful event, very successful, and, but thank you for that, and it's, you know, that's your personal time, and I appreciate that. And all the volunteers, and the student volunteers that came out as well, and playing with those little kids with all those games, it was really, it was great. And so, I'd like to thank you, because I know that you do give back to our community, and that is very important.
I'd like to thank the parents, too, who brought their kids.
Oh, it was so fun.
All their stuff, they were so cute.
I brought home a lot of stuff.
Allegheny Intermediate Unit Number Three, Mr. Tom McGuff, Board Member. Mr. McGuff will make this report.
I would like to highlight one particular item at our meeting last evening, and I think this is very important. The AIU, we had a presentation from Betsy Kreischer, and she is the chief auditor from Meyer Duzel, who are the auditors for the AIU. And it was her report, their report, their group's report on the annual financial report that will be submitted to the state, I believe, tomorrow. Has to be by the 31st, but I believe it's going to be submitted tomorrow. They just had to cross some Ts and dot the Is. But I wanted to bring to your attention just several highlights, several highlights from this. The general fund balance was, represented a 5.4% increase, and this is from all 130 of the programs. And also, we had talked about transferring money for Peasars and other retirement benefits. And there was 15 million, 367, 367,595 dollars that has been transferred into an account specifically for that. And it's just a proactive position, so that knowing that that Peasars is going to be there, that it's being budgeted for. But to the downside, during the 2014-15 fiscal year, financial instability and deficits were identified in the AIU's special education programs. Now, once they were identified, some immediate steps were taken, and in April, the AIU had contracted with Schneider Downs and Company to provide a performance audit of the special education program and assist in the disaggregation of data and preparation of the 2015-16 budgets. Specifically, in the area of special education, there was not a good relationship between cause and effect. cause and effect. There were, there was not the link between the monies that districts were being charged for services and what the actual cost was to the AIU. And so, that was a part of that deficit. And the other part of the deficit was poor collection. And that was primarily two districts, but there were a number of districts where they were allowed to incur a significant debt and non-payment. And so, those were two areas that were highlighted in this. There has been a change in leadership and Dr. Nancy Sullivan is now the Assistant Executive Director of Special Education and Support Services. And last night, Joe Lucarella is our new Director of Finance and Business Operations. And they are now together and working on these issues that this audit had brought out. But it's just important to bring that to your attention.
Well, I don't think they're going to be able to submit the audit. A sunrise isn't in yet.
You know, you know what, I actually have your sunrise. I actually have that. I brought that with me. I'll give that to you.
Okay. All right. That'll save me a trip because I have to sign it before.
I actually brought that with me to see.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, you know, how many special education folks did they lay off at the IU? I mean, you know, how many, Loretta?
I think there were only twenty.
Over twenty.
But I think it was due to enrollment drop. I think what's happening is that the schools are, in order to save money, are providing more in-house.
No longer, no longer outsourcing that. A lot of schools are doing.
Here's the problem I have with the AIU. We lay off twenty-five special ed teachers and yet we send the superintendents on a day and a half seminar for thirty grand. I mean, there's a disconnect between, you know, and I've said this before, our, you know, we're going to drill down in the operational expenses like we've never done before. And yet, you know, they need to take a message back, at least from me, Tom. I think they got to do a better job. They really do. I mean, that's, that's our money that they're spending there.
I think that's duly noted. That really is. As a matter of fact, last evening, that was, board members of the AIU were calling into question every bit of travel because obviously as part of this, reconciling all of this, anywhere that you see money that is not being, being stewarded well or effectively, you have to do something about that. And so, I think that that's part of this. And I think that the new directors of both special education and finance, they are, they are certainly charged with greater fiscal responsibility and accountability on this.
Yeah, I agree with you, Sal, on that point because, I mean, I didn't even go to the PSBA conference because it was going to cost over two thousand dollars. And ninety-nine percent of the time, I pay for everything on my own because I don't want to charge that back to the district. And that was just one where I was like, how many districts are doing this and how many board members are going from these districts to this conference? I mean, that's significant. And there really wasn't a deal at Hershey for the hotels and whatnot. And so, when I saw that, I was like, well, not going. But also, how many people are actually sending more than one board member to that conference? And that's a, pay and mileage and everything else, that's a real concern.
Thanks.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Thanks. President's Report, Mr. Sal Kalella. Mr. Kalella will make this report.
Thank you, Dr. Glasspool. Congratulations to Mrs. Hefron for being recognized as a two thousand fifteen Champion of Change through the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. The Champions of Change is an initiative from Connected Educator that recognizes, quote, "One who creatively implements technology to enhance learning." So, congratulations. Good luck to the girls' soccer team against Norman tomorrow night. I think it's a gateway, starts at eight o'clock, I believe. Double-check that. Tomorrow night is a big night in the district, Battle of the Books. And it starts at seven o'clock and it's well-attended. And if you haven't been there, you got to go. It's a lot of fun. Thursday, we have our annual high school powder puff football game starting at seven o'clock in the high school stadium. And Friday is our football team's last regular season game away against the Trobe. Good luck to the team. Just a reminder, daylight savings time is for Sunday, November the first. Remember to turn your clocks back one hour. No school on Tuesday, November the third. Parent teachers conferences that day?
Election day.
Parent teachers conferences that day. End of the first marking term and early dismissal will occur on November the fourth. Check our website for the specific times. This is an important date, please. November fourth is also our Make-A-Wish kickoff dinner. Our students, the staff, will begin fundraising for our seventeenth annual Make-A-Wish telethon. And I want to say many thanks to Mr. Barat for helping us with that and all the students that are actively involved, too. Thanksgiving break is November twenty-six through the thirtieth. And most importantly, Tuesday, November the third is election day. Please go and vote. Thank you, Dr. Glasspool.
Thank you. One announcement, the regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, at seven p.m. here in the high school auditorium.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you and good night.
Thanks so much.